Welcome to the Board of Education's November 9, 2023 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Pike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any elected officials out in the audience tonight. Unfortunately, Mr. McMillan is absent tonight due to an illness, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Also, Mr. Watson will not be in attendance as well due to another conflict. The Special Questions Committee will meet on Monday, November 27th at 4:00 p.m. in this boardroom. And thank you to everyone who's in attendance tonight. I just want to remind you that this is the Board's Public Business Meeting to discuss items that come before us for consideration, so we would just ask you to be respectful and courteous at all times and be mindful that the sound carries pretty easily in this room. So if you need to speak to your neighbor or take a phone call, please just step outside to do so. Lastly, as Superintendent Risewick reported at our work session Monday evening, Knox County Schools will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday from Wednesday, November 22nd through Friday, November 24th. On behalf of the entire Board, I wish all of our students, families, and staff a blessed Thanksgiving. Board members, you received an email yesterday, but I want to share publicly that the easement with East Tennessee Natural Gas being considered as Item 5C3 was updated to reflect the revised language requested by the Law Department, and the final documents are attached to the agenda. Also, as Mr. Watson noted at the work session, the charter school agreement being considered as Item 9A had the date of November 2nd as the final revised date, but it has been corrected to reflect the document was finalized on November 3rd. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that Freddie Cox and his department was working on 5C3 and had sent a corrected version last week. It was just lost in the shuffle, but it had nothing to do with him, but there were a lot of different versions from East Tennessee Natural Gas, so that's where a lot of the confusion lied. I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks, Gary. Ms. DeBlair, are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Do we have an motion to approve? Motion made by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Copey?
Item 5, can send agenda?
Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Horn. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Copey?
Item 5, can send agenda?
Motion by Ms. Triplet, second by Ms. Horn. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Copey?
Item 6A, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy C-270 Threat Assessment Team.
Motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now any discussion? Okay. Motion approved.
6B, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-170 Extracurricular Activities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370 Graduation Requirements as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6D, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-420 Controversial Issues as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-122 Compulsory Attendance Ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6G, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-130 Homeschools as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Reverend Butler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-122 Compulsory Attendance Ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6G, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-130 Homeschools as amended.
Motion by Ms. Triplet, second by Ms. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370 Graduation Requirements as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6D, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-420 Controversial Issues as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6A, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy C-270 Threat Assessment Team.
Motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now any discussion? Okay. Motion approved.
6B, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-170 Extracurricular Activities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370 Graduation Requirements as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6A, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy C-270 Threat Assessment Team.
Motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now any discussion? Okay. Motion approved.
6B, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-170 Extracurricular Activities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370 Graduation Requirements as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-122 Compulsory Attendance Ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6G, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-130 Homeschools as amended.
Motion by Ms. Triplet, second by Ms. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-122 Compulsory kids ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Triplet, second by Ms. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6A, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy C-270 Threat Assessment Team.
Motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now any discussion? Okay. Motion approved.
6B, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-170 Extracurricular Activities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370 Graduation Requirements as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6E, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-120 Attendance Ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-122 Compulsory kids ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Welcome to the Board of Education's November 9, 2023 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Bike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any elected officials out in the audience tonight. Unfortunately, Mr. McMillan is absent tonight due to an illness, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Also, Mr. Watson will not be in attendance as well due to another conflict. The Special Questions Committee will meet on Monday, November 27th at 4:00 PM in this boardroom. And thank you to everyone who's in attendance tonight. I just want to remind you that this is the Board's Public Business Meeting to discuss items that come before us for consideration, so we would just ask you be respectful and courteous at all times and be mindful that the sound carries pretty easily in this room. So if you need to speak to your neighbor or take a phone call, please just step outside to do so. Lastly, a superintendent at Riseweek reported at our work session Monday evening, Knox County Schools will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday from Wednesday, November 22nd through Friday, November 24th. On behalf of the entire Board, I wish all of our students, families, and staff a blessed Thanksgiving. Board members, you received an email yesterday, but I want to share publicly that the easement with East Tennessee Natural Gas being considered as Item 5C3 was updated to reflect the revised language requested by the Law Department, and the final documents are attached to the agenda. Also, as Mr. Watson noted at the work session, the charter school agreement being considered as Item 9A had the date of November 2nd as the final revised date, but it has been corrected to reflect. The document was finalized on November 3rd. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Mr. Deblar, did you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that Freddie Cox and his department was working on 5C3 and had sent a corrected version last week. It was just lost in the shuffle, but it had nothing to do with him, but there were a lot of different versions from East Tennessee Natural Gas, so that's where a lot of the confusion lied. I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks, Gary. Mr. Deblar, are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Do we have an motion to approve? Motion made by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Cootney?
Item 5, can send agenda?
Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Horn. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6A, approved first reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy C270 Threat Assessment Team.
Motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now any discussion? Okay. Motion approved.
6B, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-170 Extracurricular Activities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370 Graduation Requirements as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6D, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-420 Controversial Issues as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6E, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-120 Attendance as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-122 Compulsory Attendance Ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6G, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-130 Homeschools as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Reverend Butler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6H, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-140 Homeless Students as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6I, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-150 School Admissions as amended.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6J, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-151 Student Assignment as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Reverend Butler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6K, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-152 Student Transfers Within the System as amended.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6L, approved first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy J-153 Sibling Priority Admission.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6M, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-154 Out-of-District Student Transfer to the Regional STEM Academy as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6N, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-170 Released During School Hours as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6O, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-180 Rights and Responsibilities as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6P, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-181 Procedural Due Process as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, second by Reverend Butler. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6Q, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-190 Code of Behavior and Discipline as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6R, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-193 Student Suspension as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6S, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-194 Zero Tolerance Offenses as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Horn?
No, but I do have something after this, so.
Oh, okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion to waive second reading on the Policy C270 Threat Assessment Team so that we are in compliance with the District Accountability Report.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion?
Do you want to restate her?
Sure. So Ms. Horn made a motion to waive second reading of policy which was listed as item, the policy number is C270, but the item number was 6A. She's making a motion to waive second reading of that policy so that we are in compliance with the LEA Compliance Report.
Yeah.
And that motion was seconded by Mr. Triplet.
Mr. Triplet. Do we have any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Cootney?
Yes. Item 7A, approved fiscal year 2024 SR 3.0 Year 3 Grant Application.
We have a motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, approved grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Military and the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for a public assistance grant in the amount of $1,534,030.74.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, approved schematic designs for innovative school models grant projects at Austin East Magnet High School, Carter Middle School, Farragut High School, Gresham Middle School, Halls High School, Halls Middle School, and South Hill High School.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approved Science Education Research Foundation Grant in the amount of $500 for Career Magnet Academy.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approved American Chemical Society ACS Hatch High School Chemistry Classroom Grant in the amount of $1,500 for Richard Oakley School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7F, approved donation from Ballcamp Elementary School PTA in the amount of $30,000 for Ballcamp Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approved contracts with Curriculum Associates Incorporated, Edmentum, Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt, iStation, and MathSpace Incorporated for provision of numeracy intervention programs for the term of December 1, 2023 through November 30, 2024, which may be extended for eight additional years.
Motion, we'll just split it. Motion by Reverend Butler, second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approved contracts with Boys and Girls Club of the Tennessee Valley, Shades of Development, and YMCA of East Tennessee for provision of community schools and/or pre-K after-school program services at no cost to Knox County Schools for the term of December 1, 2023 through November 30, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Item 9A, approved charter school agreement with Knoxville Preparatory School.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a lengthy list of questions, but I'm not going to go through all of them because I think the more I look at them, the more it comes back to what really bothers me most about the timeliness of this agreement is that this charter administration, who is supposed to be a partner working with us, knowing full well that it was well past the deadline for our agenda and being advised that it was well past the deadline, wanted to push forward and give it to us after our agenda had even been published. I think that shows just an amount of disrespect for the chartering authority that we shouldn't allow to go on because we are expected to have some kind of oversight. And if we continue to just let them do whatever they want to, especially this early in the process, I think it sets us up for a very bad relationship. I think we need to stick to our deadline and we need to not approve this tonight. I'm not going to vote for this tonight because I don't feel that it was timely filed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to, is Ms. Nixon, I know she's here, there she is, just ask her a quick question. I know on Monday you said that as far as oversight goes, there's not really a whole lot you can do until this agreement is in place. Was, did I understand you correctly when you said that?
Well, and that is my understanding because I am working on your behalf, the Board is the chartering authority. And since I am working on behalf of you all, until an agreement is in place, I don't feel like I can have the same kind of oversight and authority to ask questions.
But they are still continuing with their processes, so they will continue on regardless of whether we have given you the official okay or not.
Because we have approved their application, they have the opportunity to continue on with enrollment, recruiting, they have jobs posted for teachers, et cetera. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I had the same clarifying question, so thank you, Ms. Nixon, for that. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Ms. Nixon and Gary Dupla and everyone who worked on it, all the hard work that went into it. I do still have a problem or concern about the timeliness in which we received this and having the opportunity fully to vet it, but I do want to thank them for their work because I know work went into it and the timeframe that they had was limited, but they did the work, so I want to thank them for that.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Ms. Bike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank Steve for recommending an app that made me able to completely go through this document because otherwise that wouldn't have been possible. Read it to me while I was working. And I echo Reverend Butler, thank you, Ms. Nixon and Gary for all the hard work. It does seem like this is a very legalese procedural by the law and stuff like this, but I also echo the concerns of Reverend Butler and Ms. Owens with, I would have loved to have had this on time. I do think it sets a precedent, and I hope that that's something that Ms. Nixon and the people involved can really keep an eye on as we go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Cootney, will you do a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Dr. Butler?
Pass.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Bike?
Pass.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote? Ms. Bike, would you like to change your pass vote? That's four yes, one no, and two pass.
So that doesn't make quorum. Motion fails since quorum was not made.
Do they need to bring it back to us? Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Triplet, Madam Chair. So, yes, so the question is, you know, does, do we need to have a contract? And the answer is yes. So the Board is going to have to have a contract with the charter school. So something either this or if the Board desires, you know, some tweaks or what have you, that it will need to be brought back in December for the Board to vote on the contract of some type with the chartering school. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Deblar. Mr. Triplet, I think we have some public forum speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do. Tiffany Matthews is our first speaker. If you'll state your name and county of residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
Tiffany Matthews, Knox County. Good evening. I would like to address comments made by Mr. Myers in the Knox News Q and A regarding his response to the culture of resistance identified by the Special Education Task Force. Mr. Myers described his understanding of special education within the public education system as possessing a distinct status, one in which the disconnect between what the school district's recommendations are and what the parents' desires are can become legitimate. The TGS, I apologize. This is correct, as it is a parent's right to dispute a school's decision through several avenues, one of which is to request a due process hearing. However, as a parent who has gone beyond my own children's programs to advocate for drastic improvement, I know with certainty that parents' desires are for KCS to simply follow the law. I myself was once unaware of my child's rights, in a large part because I believed what KCS was telling me. I figured it was my job to be the best parent I could be and provide that expertise to the IEP team, and it was their job to provide expertise about my child's program in accordance with the law. I have found over and over, parents don't even know what has gone wrong with their children's education. Now that I am helping other parents in IEP meetings, they have been told the wrong thing, and they don't even know it until another parent opens their eyes just as mine were open. A lot of focus has been on lawsuits, generally portrayed as one-off cases by overly demanding parents. This representation is grossly incorrect. The KCS cases that go to due process and are settled or lost in court are the very tip of the iceberg, often representing hundreds and even thousands of students with disabilities who basic rights under IDEA and ADA have not been met. Those rights include appropriate placement in general education classrooms with support, receipt of related services like music therapy or specialized instruction through effectively prepared modified content. It is time for KCS to recognize federal law is not being followed, and the solution to get us back on track is straightforward and simple. Follow the law. Our trust as parents will naturally follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Up next is Kim Kretich. Kim, I think you know the routine, but if you'll state your name and county of residence.
Kim Kretich, Knox County. I wanted to follow up on what Tiffany said. First of all, I want to say again how excited I am about the task force recommendations and the school's commitment to implementing those. But I will tell you that when that news Sentinel article came out, my phone blew up with what in the world, parent desires. It seemed to place this once again as an us versus them, parents versus the school system and special ed. And I want to be very clear that when it's thought, it sounded like, at first it seemed, Evady Satterfield did a wonderful thing for me. I came up to her after years of, you know, advocating in front of the Board, and I said, is anything going to get it done? And she said, I'm going to be honest with you, Kim. It just looks like there's one person complaining, and that's you. And I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe, I thought, what do you think I've been doing full-time for, I think, over 900 families at least, full-time as a volunteer? So I called on people to email and say, hey, we're, she helped us and she's representing us. So then luckily, a bunch of Board members reached out to me and said, okay, so it's not just you. We were told it was just you wanting, having an agenda to lawsuit the district or whatever. Then it became, you know, oh, all these parents, overly demanding parents suing. Then it became, you know, oh, all these parents, overly demanding parents suing. And it's, it's not that. That's the tip of the tip of the iceberg. That's the very tippy top because most parents will not go to litigation. They will homeschool, do whatever. And now with the task forces shining a light on, guess what? This actually is happening, and let's solve it. That felt great. But then to see, it was sort of like, now it's, before it was overly demanding parents, and now it's back to, we just need to close a communication gap, like sped-splain it for these parents. And that feels very patronizing and somewhat insulting. And I want to make sure we shine a light on the communication gap is between the law and what Knox County Schools sped has been doing. That's it. Take the parents out of it. Take me out of it. I'm ready to go, and I was. And I, I just want to make sure we're not going down that same path of us versus them. Just follow the law. There are three magic words. It's called follow the law. And that's all parents are looking for. And I really hope that when we get those outside organization eyes on it, that's what they'll do. But please, make no mistake, this is not the parents fighting. This is the parents trying to support this district. It always has been. I hope it always will be. Thank you.
Up next is Sheri Super. Chair, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Sheri Super from Knox County. I'm the chair of the Moms for Liberty Knox County Chapter. And over the last two months, I've been communicating with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, Mr. Dupler, and one very supportive member of this board about the explicit books in our school libraries. This is from a book called Perks of Being a Wallflower. And the boy kept working up the girl's shirt, and as much as she said no, he kept working it. After a few minutes, she stopped protesting, and he pulled off her shirt, and she had a white bra on with lace. I honestly don't know what to do at this point. Pretty soon, he took off her bra and started to kiss her breasts. And then he put his hand down her pants, and she started moaning. I think they were very drunk. He reached to take off her pants, but she started crying really hard. So he reached for his own. He pulled his pants and underwear down to his knees. Please, Dave, no. But the boy just talked soft to her and told her how good she looked and things like that. And she grabbed his penis with his hands and started moving it. I wish I could describe this a little more nicely without using words like penis, but this is the way it is. After a few minutes, the boys pushed, the boy pushed the girl's head down, and she started to kiss his penis. She was still crying. Finally, she stopped crying because he put his penis in her mouth, and I don't think you can cry in that position. I had to stop watching at this point because I started to feel sick. But it kept going on, and they kept doing other things, and she kept saying no. There are books like this in multiple libraries. It's very difficult to find what book, where it's located, and cross-reference and research to make sure that these, that the books that we're, we're talking about are actually this explicit. We are not book banners. We just want to have some kind of policy that can either label these books, segregate these books, have parental opt-out options, or in the event that some of these are too graphic, be removed from the schools. This board says that there is a review policy, and I appreciate it. But asking parents and students to do this put them in the, in the firing line, and a lot of them don't want to report it. The other part of your policy also says that that is not the only procedure that you can use. It does not preclude the Board of Education and the Director of Schools from developing other policies or procedures for the removal of materials from a library collection. I just ask that this board would consider reviewing their policy and perhaps making it more appropriate. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sheri. And up next, Donna. And Donna, I'm going to apologize for the last name, but Tripasi, is that close enough? Thank you, Donna. And Donna, if you'll state your name, county of residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
Donna Tripasi, from Knox County. I'd like to thank you for your time. I'm here with the Moms for Liberty Knoxville Chapter. Tonight, I'd like to specifically address certain literature in our school libraries. As of this afternoon, we have verified that a book titled Crank by Ellen Hopkins is carried by Bearden Middle School Library and others. The sixth, seventh, and eighth graders of Bearden Middle School have unfettered access to this book. The parents and educators in this room may not be fully aware of the sexually explicit erotic content of this book, but the kids have, have heard about it. As this book is currently out on loan to one of the 1,277 11, 12, or 13-year-old students of Bearden Middle. I'd like to read you an excerpt of this book. "We drove back off the highway and into a grove of fresh-scented evergreens. He pulled out a bindle, which looked a bit short, and a six-pack of beer. For the next 20 minutes, we snorted and drank, climbing to a very tall buzz. It started with a kiss cranked revved pistons firing full bore. Passion fire crackled in tiny bursts from thigh to belly button. 'Oh, baby, I want you so bad.' 'Bad to the bone?' We laughed, but it wasn't all right, not for long. My shirt tore open. 'Wait, I've waited for weeks. Put up and shut up.' Kissed segued to bites, bruises, pain rippled through my body. 'Brendan, please, stop. No, you promised, you damn little tease.' Off came my shorts, down went his zipper. I realized I was in serious trouble. I'll scream. Go ahead, no one can hear but skunks and coyotes. Still, as I opened my mouth, his hand slapped down on it. Those sublime muscles hardened. Just relax, you'll love it. My brand-new Victoria's Secrets shredded, and I felt the worst of Brendan, pause, savering my terror. They all love it. Had he gone in a different way, I might have responded with excitement. Instead, I froze as he pushed inside. There it is. Oh, God, there it goes. It went all right with an audible tear. Pain mushroomed into agony, and all I could do was go stiff. You weren't lying, you little bitch. I laid there sobbing as he worked and sweated over me. Stoked by the monster, it took him a long time to finish. Give me a line, I'll give you an encore. He pulled away sticky and bloody. Throbbing inside and out, I didn't move, didn't dare look him in the eye. I'm not here to debate whether it is appropriate to have erotic sexualized material available to young children. That matter has already been debated, and precedent has been set. The Motion Picture Association of America assigns a content grading of age appropriateness to movies. Television does the same. Parental advisory labels are placed on CDs. We, as a society, have already established that young children do not necessarily have the ability to determine what is most appropriate for themselves."
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. With that, our meeting is adjourned.